I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. If I could have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Bergman.
Present.
Commissioner Guterres is not feeling well this evening, and so he will be absent. Commissioner Harper-Peterson.
Present.
Vice Chair Bradley.
Present.
Chair Silverman.
Present. So, the next item is public comment. This public comment is reserved for items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, I will move on to approval of the minutes. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes? I see we had a robust and interesting conversation about cannabis.
Good, and you missed it, but it looks pretty accurate from my end, so I don't have any changes.
Well, then I would entertain a motion to approve.
I approve. I motion we approve the August 21st, 2017 minutes.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right. And could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bergman?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Chair Silverman?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to the public hearing. The procedure for the public hearing is as follows. Staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendation. The applicant will make a presentation, or may make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed, and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers are asked to fill out a speaker form found by the door and hand it to the recording secretary. Prior to addressing the commission, the speaker is asked to come up to the microphone and speak since the meeting is being recorded. This will assist staff in preparing the minutes. We have two, what I'm guessing are going to be fairly brief items on grading and dirt haul, followed by the item on the ordinance code. So if we could start with 906 Holly.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners.
Thank you.
The first item will be extremely brief. As the applicant requests this item be continued to the September 18th Planning Commission meeting, the applicant's having some continued conversations with San Mateo County Environmental Health Staff as to the extent and methods of the remediation, so they'd like to have a little more time for those conversations and are requesting the item be continued.
Okay. Just for the record, I supervise the attorney who represents environmental health, but I know nothing about this item in my day job. Does someone want to make a motion to continue the hearing?
Sure. I move that we continue the item to the September 18th, 2017 Planning Commission meeting.
Before we have a second, and I apologize, was there anyone here from the public who wanted to speak on this item? Seeing none, is there a second?
A second.
I will recognize Shannon Bergman for the second. And can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bergman?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Chair Silverman?
Yes. All right. We'll move on to what I'm assuming is not quite as brief an item. 941 Branston Road, consideration of a grading and dirt haul certificate to implement the interim measures work plan.
Thank you. As introduced, this is an application for a grading and dirt haul certificate to implement an interim measures work plan. The subject site is at 941 Branston Road. The site is occupied by A1 Materials. They operate a concrete batch plant. The zoning for the site is heavy industrial. The adjacent site is operated by CG Lubricants since approximately 1971. They refine oil and are currently doing some lubricant blending and storage operations at the site. The soil contamination gravitated from this CG lubricant property to the adjacent property at 941 Branston. An interim measures work plan has been approved by the California Department of Toxic Substance Control, usually referenced as DTSC. The applicant is requesting a grading and dirt haul to implement this interim measures work plan. The removal of 850 cubic yards of soil is necessary, and they will be importing in 770 yards of clean soil, as well as 37 yards of aggregate base. They're going to be taking advantage of the location of the concrete batch plant on-site and utilizing concrete from that business, so there'll be no truck trips associated with the finished concrete pour. The business also plans to remain operational during these grading activities. As you see, the grading area is really limited to the side adjacent to the CG lubricants property, and there will be adequate room to keep the other business in operation. We did receive, during the public review and comment period for the SEQA document, the DTSC received a public comment relating to the dirt haul route, and specifically concern was expressed about carrying contaminated loaded trucks past residential neighborhood down Industrial Road to the north. So the applicant has agreed to modify the haul route, and DTSC is also requiring now the modified haul route, so that empty trucks may arrive from Holly to Industrial, to the project site, but any loaded trucks full of contaminated soil must leave the site via Branston to Industrial Road to Britton to 101. In no event shall any loaded truck travel north on Industrial Road to Holly, and in no event shall trucks utilize Holly Street west of Industrial Road. So I have before you the modified grading and dirt haul certificate. If you see the last page there, has that revised dirt haul route, and as I indicated, agreed to by the applicant. And as indicated also, DTSC did conduct the environmental analysis for the project. They prepared a negative declaration. That document was circulated for a 30-day public comment period from July 26th, August 25th. They also, that public, announcement of the public comment period also provided some information to adjacent property and business owners relating to the work that'll be happening at the site. The city also mailed notice of this public hearing and the project on August 24th, as well as published in the newspaper on August 25th. And as I noted, DTSC did receive two comments, and that was just relating to the dirt haul route. Here's the formal motion. Choose if you choose to approve the project. Happy to answer any of your questions.
I just have a couple of questions. So it looks like from the report in the map, so all the staging will be contained on-site. Okay. And then, how long is the project estimated to take place?
It's a pretty short duration. I have to, is the applicant present, representative? Okay, good. I'll have the applicant speak to that.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for staff?
You know what? Yeah, I do have one more. I noticed that, actually, in both the soil grading and dirt haul reports that we looked at, the geotechnical report was, was referenced, and I'm wondering how the city monitors adherence to that. Is the city engineer make sure that everything is operating correctly?
Right. So from our, after this step, it goes forward to the Public Works Department, where the city engineer does review the grading plans in a little more detail, also takes a look at the geotechnical report, and makes sure all those recommendations are adhered to. Yes.
Great. Thank you, Lisa.
So I thought we had to notice the people on the dirt haul route. So with the dirt haul route changing, we don't have to renotice?
No, actually, we are not required to notice the dirt haul route because Industrial Road is, is a truck haul route. So it's only when you're utilizing, I believe it's residential streets, that you're required to do the notification.
Okay.
So they received the notice from the larger notice that was completed through the environmental report, and there are no residences on the revised haul route.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Not, not for staff.
Thank you.
Shall I?
Yes, please. Yes.
So I'm Martha Watson. I'm the representative for GC Lubricants, and the target, because it's on a active site, is to actually complete the grade backfill in two weeks.
Oh, great. Okay. So much faster than I thought.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Okay.
I suppose that was probably the extent of the applicant's presentation. Fantastic. Any other questions for staff or for the applicant? Seeing none. Is there any member of the public who wishes to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second? Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bergman?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Chair Silverman?
Yes. Is there any discussion among the commission?
I don't have any discussion. Get this dirty soil out of here.
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the Planning Commission grant approval of the request for grading and dirt haul certificate to implement the interim measures work plan at 941 Branston Road, APN 046133019, based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report, and is conditioned in the draft grading and dirt haul certificate.
Is there a second? Second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bergman?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Chair Silverman?
Yes. All right. Moving on to the item regarding the eucalyptus trees, and I see that we have a lot of public comments, and we're going to proceed like we proceed with all items. We're going to hear from staff, and then we'll take public comment. I would like to just make a couple of observations. So this is an ordinance revision, and with an ordinance revision, the Planning Commission has to review it and make a recommendation to the City Council. Ultimately, it's the City Council that will decide whether or not the ordinance revision should be adopted. We could vote and make a recommendation not to approve it, and the board can, excuse me, the City Council can approve it. We can make a recommendation to approve it, and the City Council can make a decision not to approve it. I would also make an observation today that we are not deciding today whether or not any particular eucalyptus tree is going to be removed, whether all of them are going to be removed, whether three of them are going to be removed. We are not going to make any of those decisions. What I understand the decision is that we're being asked to make is to make a change to the ordinance, which would theoretically allow some eucalyptus trees to be removed that couldn't currently be removed. So you can certainly come up and absolutely encourage to say whatever you like during your two minutes, and if you would like more than two minutes, you can let me know, and I can give you more than two minutes. But we are not deciding whether we're cutting down eucalyptus trees tonight. That is not the purpose of this item. I will say that one of the things I'm interested in hearing about is why we would eliminate the Founder's Tree recommendation in its entirety versus rather than simply excluding eucalyptus trees. That's something I'm curious about, and I'm sure that staff will educate me as to why that entire designation should be removed. Those are the kinds of questions, I think, that it would be very appropriate for the community members to make, but I just wanted to provide you my, my general comments about what we are doing today and what we aren't doing today, so you folks aren't disappointed. And did I say anything wrong, Mr. City Attorney? My question was, did I say anything inappropriate or incorrect?
I didn't hear anything that was inappropriate or incorrect, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that, but I would have taken, anyway. All right. With that, if there, is there a staff presentation?
Yes. I like to consolidate all my items at one meeting.
Yeah, please do. Any massive developments you want to talk about today?
So as you introduced, the item is relating to the Founder Tree designation in the code. And as you correctly introduced the item, the purpose of your hearing this evening is to review, receive public comments, to consider the mitigated negative declaration that was prepared for the San Carlos Avenue Tree Removal Project, also consider an ordinance to remove the Founder Tree designation. And as you indicated, the Planning Commission will not be considering any tree removals at this meeting.
I still hear thunder.
The eucalyptus trees were planted on both sides of San Carlos Avenue in the late 1800s. The roadway was widened in about 1910. That eliminated the eucalyptus trees, or most of them anyway, on the north side of the street. And then in 1920s, with the construction of sidewalk downtown, all of the eucalyptus trees from El Camino on up through the downtown area were eliminated. The city's 1991 Historical Resource Inventory does mention the eucalyptus trees under the Brief History of San Carlos section, but does not attribute historical status to these Over the years, many eucalyptus trees on San Carlos Avenue have been removed by private property owners or have failed. Since 2005, approximately 20 eucalyptus trees have either failed or have been removed. It is estimated that there are 30 trees remaining from the original planting. On January 11th, earlier this year, a large eucalyptus tree adjacent to the Arrendal Elementary School parking lot fell down, completely blocking San Carlos Avenue traffic. The City Council established a capital improvement project for the San Carlos Avenue Pathway and Eucalyptus Tree Removal Project. This CIP project was initially established for the removal of 12 eucalyptus trees, restoring the existing asphalt pathway, as well as constructing some accessibility ramps, and the focus of that project was between Cordillares and Alameda. At its January 23rd meeting, the City Council added $300,000 to that CIP project, bringing the total fund balance to $500,000, and expanded the project to include an evaluation of all of the eucalyptus trees on San Carlos Avenue due to City Council's public safety concern with these trees. The council authorized staff to proceed with the process to evaluate the trees and amend the zoning code to remove the protected status of the eucalyptus trees. As you're aware, trees are the responsibility of the adjacent private property owner to maintain. There's several exceptions, mostly in the downtown area, but elsewhere in town, trees are the responsibility of the adjacent property owner. San Carlos Municipal Code requires a permit to remove a protected tree. The Community Development Director can grant a tree removal permit if they're able to make the findings prior to the approval, and that's contained in the code and also outlined in your staff report. The Founder's Tree designation was added in 2009 with the zoning code update to protect the eucalyptus trees on San Carlos Avenue. Other eucalyptus trees, as well as acacia, monterey pine, and fruit trees, are not protected and can be removed without a permit. The ordinance amendment is pretty straightforward. It removes all references to Founder's Trees from the code, remove reference to group of trees also from the protected status of eucalyptus trees, and removes reference to the species to allow any eucalyptus tree to be removed without a permit. LSA conducted an environmental review of the project as required by, under SEQA. They found that the project would not result in a significant environmental impact report, excuse me, significant environmental impact. The negative declaration was available for a 21-day public comment period from July 28th through August 21st. The Arborist report evaluated all the eucalyptus trees along San Carlos Avenue. These trees are located very near the roadway. The trees are mature and in need of removal or heavy trimming. The report identified trees by hazard rating, with a rating of 12 considered a high probability for damage and/or injury, and a rating of 3 being very low chance of failure and/or injury. The Arborist further identified four trees as Priority 1, described that work as being urgent, should be completed immediately, and Priority 2 trees, further described as being significant in that work on those trees should be completed during the second pruning cycle. Those four Priority 1 trees have been removed. A historical evaluation was also previously prepared and included as an attachment to the SEQA document. To be eligible for listing on the California Registry, the trees would need to be largely continuous on both sides of the avenue, display consistent size, and frame the view of the railroad depot. Tree planting originally was on both sides of the street, starting at El Camino Real. The trees are no longer regular in size or spacing and rarely occur on both sides of the roadway in any location. The trees no longer display the character-defining features it once had and lack sufficient integrity to qualify as a historic resource. As I indicated, the initial study mitigated negative declaration was available for public review and comment, and during that time, we received 11 public comments. Comments included objection to removal of the trees, suggestions to consider selective removal, trimming, and topping, that the trees should qualify as a historic resource. There's also several letters of support for the removal of the trees. LSA did prepare a response to comment memo, although not required for a negative declaration. That's also included as an attachment in your packet. The commoners did not raise any new issue or provide new evidence that would warrant additional SEQA analysis. So we do have a good team of staff and consultants available this evening to answer your questions, including Jay Walter, Public Works Director, if you have any questions on the San Carlos Avenue Improvement Project, or the next steps on the removal work, replanting. Two representatives from LSA, Kevin Keelty, the Arborist, and Laura Jones, the Historical Consultant.
So, I'm sorry.
I'm almost there.
Yep.
Next steps. We have this item scheduled for the October 9th City Council meeting, and they'll consider your recommendation. If the ordinance is adopted, staff will prepare plans and specifications and solicit bids for the tree removal work. City Council action would be required to award the tree removal contract, and then staff will also retain a consultant to work on a tree planting plan with the pedestrian safety improvement plan for San Carlos Avenue. And here, motion. In the staff report, I think I just had the one motion listed, but as you're well aware, we do need two motions. We'd like them separate motions, one on the mitigated negative declaration, and the second on the, on the ordinance itself. So at this time, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
So can you help me understand a little bit better what happened in 2009, and why this designation was added, what the purpose was? Was it really only about the eucalyptus trees, or was it more? And then, in addition, I'm interested to understand why, if the primary motivation of this change, and correct me if I'm wrong, is to allow the flexibility to remove some eucalyptus trees, why we would eliminate the Founder's designation in the entirety and not simply remove it as to eucalyptus trees?
So based on our research from the 2009 code update, and Al, feel free to add anything, I didn't actually work on that project. Prior to 2009, trees were protected based on size and not species. So it was pretty much any tree of, I think it was 36 inches, was considered a heritage tree, and you needed a permit to remove as such. With the 2009 code update, the city wanted to start identifying species that would be considered exempt from that process, and so not require every tree be protected. So that exemption list was added with, I believe, the acacia and the cedar, fruit trees, eucalyptus trees, but there was some interest in the community at that time to preserve the trees on San Carlos Avenue. So it was decided to add a Founder Tree designation in, to protect those trees, and that was the intent, really, the one for San Carlos Avenue.
But does it provide a greater level of protection than the heritage tree? I mean, like, so are there trees that are Founder's trees but that aren't heritage? It seems like it must add like an additional layer of protection, doesn't it?
I've, I've researched all our different historical resources available at the library and, you know, at City Hall, and I didn't find any other reference to significant tree plantings. There's certainly trees in our community that were planted before 1925.
Sure.
But those would be of sufficient size and species that they would fall under current protection. So if it was an oak, it's protected as a heritage tree anyway. So the only ones we need this status on are trees that are exempt.
So the, so the eucalyptus was exempt from the heritage tree ordinance?
It doesn't have a protected status unless it's in a, is a Founder Tree.
So does the Founder's Tree designation provide any additional level of protection that, if you, if you're already a heritage tree, does it give you any added level of protection to be a Founder's Tree?
No. No. I mean, there could be maybe a monterey pine that somebody brings forward that was planted before 1925, but I'm not aware of that.
I mean, would staff object to limiting the, basically having Founder's Trees only? I'm just, I guess I'm a little bit concerned about unintended consequences. I mean, is there a downside to simply removing eucalyptus trees and leaving the Founder's Tree designation? Because I mean, it just, it feels kind of nice to have, you know, protection, extra protection for historical trees.
Right. But, but those would be protected based on the type of tree today.
I get it.
With the exception of acacia, tree of heaven, a fruit tree, or a pine tree.
Are there acacias ever protected?
No, but maybe there's an acacia in town that somebody comes forward and says this is a Founder's Tree.
There's one up where I live that I would hate, it's probably been around for a hundred years. I don't know how long they live, but...
They're not currently protected unless, and I don't know what that documentation might be, since we've done some research.
Well, we'll come back. I mean, we've got public comments, but I guess the, the question I have that I want answered by the end of the evening, if possible, is whether staff objects to simply carving out eucalyptus trees from the Founder's Tree designation and not eliminating it, and if so, what the basis for that objection would be. And why don't you just hold your thoughts on that?
Then I might forget them.
Okay.
I think my concern is, it is referenced as Founder Trees in other places, like I believe the general plan talks about them as Founder Trees. So if we just take out eucalyptus, I'm not sure what it would then reference, and it would be inconsistent.
Well, it would, wouldn't it refer to other trees that were planted before 1920?
But I believe the general plan specifically talks about those trees.
Yeah.
Being Founder Trees.
I feel like I'm, I'm confused or not.
Okay. Are there, are there other questions, and then we can come back to that?
Yeah, I have a question. If we decide...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Through, through the chair, and I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Commissioner Bergman, but while we're on this topic of Founder's Trees, I did want to mention to the Planning Commission that one of the strategic, strategic objectives that the council has called us to take action on is reevaluating our protected tree ordinance in a comprehensive manner, which would allow us to kind of take public comments, work with the Planning Commission, and look at, you know, how our protected tree ordinance is currently structured, what's protected and what's not. So, so I just wanted to provide that additional piece of information to the commission. I know you still want an answer about that, and you might still want to talk about it, of course, but we are going to be taking a comprehensive look at tree protection, our current tree protection ordinance, and amending that in the future, most likely next year.
Wouldn't that argue, though, I mean, and I don't mean to put you, I mean, wouldn't that argue for simply carving out eucalyptus trees now and then letting you come back after? I mean, it sounds like this is intended to address eucalyptus trees, and we can address eucalyptus trees, and then you can do your study session, and you can get public comment, and then we can do something else later that incorporates that, you know, more robust public process. That's kind of my thought process, but I'm, I'm just one commissioner, and I can, it's surprisingly easy to change my mind. You just have to give me a reason. Does anyone have any other questions for staff at this time?
Very usual. You are literally...
I have a comment.
Yeah.
I have a question. Do you want to go first?
No, no, no.
So if we keep the Founder Tree designation, that still allows the city and individual homeowners that are responsible for the trees to act on trees that are unsafe, correct? That doesn't stop anyone from taking out unsafe trees if we leave that designation in place, correct?
The permit process remains, correct? So today, if you make no changes to the code, there's still a review process if the tree is determined...
If it's unsafe, we can still remove it, right?
These stages, they need a permit. Right.
Okay. And the reason why, one of the things I read in here was that there's association between the trees and one of the, one of our founders, right? And they, it's loosely, it wasn't like the trees weren't lining his house, but they were part, you know, they were part of his legacy, right? Because he had them put in there, and that's part of why they're designated as Founder Trees. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. That's another question. Thank you.
So removing this would mean that they could remove eucalyptus trees, and apparently these other species of trees as well, that are currently listed under Founder's Tree by right. So they would not need a permit to do so? Am I understanding that?
Correct.
Okay. I actually, funny enough, David, I had those exact same two questions as the first two, understanding why, why the protection in the first place in 2009, particularly of the eucalyptus. And then, secondly, what that means for these other trees listed in the staff report, the acacia, tree of heaven, fruit trees, or monterey pine. And so I would like some more information on that as well. But I'm happy to hear public comment right now.
Awesome. Any other questions for staff at this time? Thank you. All right. I have seven speaker slips, and I'm going to call you up in the order that I have you, unless there's someone who needs to go, in which case I can call you up first. I am going to give you two minutes to speak, but if you need more time, you can certainly ask for it, but I, you know, I'd ask you to try and keep your comments to about two minutes. And the first is Darren Batara.
I appreciate your inquiry and actually explaining the whole, setting the premise for what it is. I share some of the same thoughts and questions that all of you have sort of expressed. I am a homeowner on San Carlos Avenue, and I am in favor of removal of the, of the eucalyptus trees. Part of my concern, obviously, is being a homeowner and having children around there, and having witnessed two freak accidents on San Carlos Avenue in a very short span of time, one being this accident that happened with a drunk driver, and then the second time of almost a near miss of having children be in the pathway of a tree falling. So I work in the healthcare industry, I often see the traumatic afterparts of what happens, and so my lens is really geared towards what goes on after the fact. And I appreciate both sides of the conversation here. I think what I'm, my point here, coming here today, is just to articulate that I do think we have to aim this discussion and balance a little bit about the discussion of safety. Because while there is obviously some true sentiment in keeping eucalyptus trees and the Founder Designation, I do think that as a city and as citizens, we do have an ultimate responsibility to ensure that there is safety along San Carlos Avenue. It's a dangerous pathway for a lot of reasons, not including what goes on with traffic and what's projected to come with more housing. So that is my lens, and I just wanted to articulate that for you.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Next up is Cara Vonck. And Ms. Vonck? I did notice that you're speaking on behalf of a number of different people, six or more, to be exact, if not more. How much time do you think you need to speak?
Excuse me, I think that's a mistake. I think that's just the order of our group that wants to speak.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, so there are seven of you that would like to speak?
Yes, and we all have individual cards, but on one of the papers, they'll list the order.
Ah, I see that, I see, I see, okay. Well...
I'm trying to keep it to two minutes, but I'll have to talk very fast.
You do as you can, and I absolutely appreciate your comments.
Okay. First of all, I just want to mention that you are correct, this targets eucalyptus trees, so they can all be cut down, no matter how old or how big, and they would no longer be protected. So I'll start my comments now. As developed more fully in my written comments, the 129-year-old San Carlos Avenue tree-lined boulevard is a historic and cultural resource under federal, state, and local criteria, as well as the tree's designation as Founder's Trees in our tree ordinance. And I definitely differ with the city's consultants' opinion. I will start by outlining three of the U.S. Secretary of Interior's criteria. The first criteria, the trees are associated with the life of an important person in our past. The trees were planted by Mr. Timothy Guy Phelps, first American landowner in San Carlos, who purchased acreage from Doña Marie Arguello for his grain and cattle ranching interests. He purchased Mrs. Arguello's adobe, built a board and batten house next door at Cedar Magnolia Avenues, and later built a mansion on Old County Road. Mr. Phelps was a state legislator instrumental in establishing Samhitaio County, ran for governor, losing to Leland Stanford, was a U.S. Senator, collector of customs in San Francisco, and a longtime Regent of the University of California. Second, the trees have a historical association with the development patterns and trends that shaped San Carlos. With the advent of railroad travel down the peninsula and San Franciscans already purchasing property in the area to escape city living, Mr. Phelps was the first to recognize the suburban development potential of San Carlos, calling it Phelpsville. He therefore established a development pattern or trend that resulted in the city's incorporation after several more tries by others. Third, the eucalyptus trees represent a distinctive characteristic of a type-period region or method of construction. Mr. Phelps was not immune to the "city beautiful movement" sweeping the United States, which recognized that nature is beneficial to our physical and mental well-being. Cities across the United States were planting beautiful tree-lined boulevards and parks. The most famous landscapers you may have heard of were the Olmsted Brothers. Mr. Phelps beautified San Carlos Avenue, planting large drought-tolerant trees well-suited to our environment. They were popular in California. Note Burlingame's well-maintained eucalyptus trees lining the El Camino Real, maintained as a historic resource. The trees are of a distinctive type and landscaping in the period of our history. Fourth, the stand of eucalyptus trees are a character-defining feature of San Carlos, and have maintained their integrity and feeling of association to history. Despite recent removal of four trees and loss of two others, 44 of 40 trees remain, according to the Arborist report, not an insignificant number. Driving west, in the first sweep of the curve, the stand of four enormous and stately trees fronting the medical building are impressive, setting the stage for the others to come, providing shade and a forest canopy. Most are located on the south side, where there are few or no houses adjacent to a boardwood fence and riparian bushes that descend to the creek. The trees tie us to our past history in feeling and association. This stretch of road ties us to our other character-defining features, such as the historic train depot, Drake Building, and hacienda Garden Apartments. No wonder San Carlos Avenue is designated a scenic road in our general plan. Please recommend that these trees be preserved to maintain our heritage. Thank you.
Next up is Mr. John, is it Josh Wallace or John Wall? Josh Wallace?
Good evening, Commissioners. Stoff, I have a few points to make tonight, but my high-level takeaway is that if you are going to cut down a tree, and there are sometimes legitimate reasons to do so, it is imperative that the downed tree be replaced. Replace it with a like tree. If that's not possible in the case of 100-year-old eucalypti, replace it with that tree's values: shade, character, habitat, increased property value, pollution mitigation, and climbing branches for your grandkids. Unlike land, they are making more trees. Cut one, plant one. Replanting is not an afterthought. It is a critical component of any urban forest master plan. Please let me know if San Carlos has such a master plan, because I couldn't find it. Yes, trees don't last forever, but I find it hard to believe that all 44 eucalyptus trees in question are clear and present danger. I was appalled, excuse me, I was appalled to read in the report that one of the reasons for cutting down the remaining 44 trees is cited as "it's efficient for the contractor." Or to paraphrase, "Well, might as well take them all down while we're at it." These are glorious Founder's Trees, a part of our heritage, not weeds in a sidewalk. The staff report has stated that four trees require work immediately for safety reasons, and those trees were removed this summer, which, by the way, was during the protected species nesting season, so we assume that the mitigation measures in the staff report were followed. Beyond that, the staff report claims that the remaining trees are all in poor condition, but provides no other justification for mass removal. Why is the city proposing to remove all these trees rather than just the ones that are truly a safety risk? It seems too often in property development, for example, that replacement trees required by the city and promised by the builders, but never happens. A case in point is the two large trees removed in front of CVS in the public right-of-way that have not been replaced in years. The city can't replace its own trees, much less enforce requirements that others replace cut trees. The arbicide plan for San Carlos Ave is being pushed through by a mitigated negative declaration. A mitigated negative deck is essentially a way to bypass full disclosure and inputs from residents. Why is the city trying to avoid working with residents on this plan? Perhaps it's because of Page 11 of the mitigated deck document states that "the project will have no substantial adverse effect on the scenic vista." To all of us that live nearby, drive, bike, or walk along San Carlos Ave, which is most people in the city, taking all these trees will have a major aesthetic effect. There needs to be a full public notification and an environmental impact report. There will be an environmental impact if these trees are cut. Here's an idea to mitigate the negative declaration: design and fund a tree replacement program based on community input that will start to mitigate the negatives. Planning Commissioners, ask yourself, what are you planning for? I hope it's not a post-eucalyptic San Carlos where noble trees are but a memory of the city of good living. Thank you.
Next up is Ms. Altous.
Thanks for all your work for San Carlos. The 44 eucalyptus trees on the city's chopping blocker worthy of a second look and very careful consideration. As San Carlos grows and changes, it's more important than ever to make room for what already exists and thrives. Any Realtor will tell you, one of the great selling points of a house is a tree-lined street, and that's why homes on Carmelita are so sought after, those fabulous trees that fill their backyards with shade and beauty. Raising those 44 trees would devastate the view along San Carlos Avenue. Add to that the new proposal from the city to make San Carlos a more pedestrian-friendly street, which is wonderful, but according to the proposal, would require cutting down 30 trees between Prospect and Beverly. That doesn't leave much, if anything at all, if either of these plans go through. Just imagine what it would look like. It would be barren, no trees, no shade, and much less canopy. The tree canopy in San Carlos is receding. You can see it along the horizon from the train or when driving around town, and you can definitely see it from Google Earth, which shows the streets of San Carlos much brighter, wider, and much more visible than streets in neighboring towns. The construction boom here is decreasing the number of trees, and although there is a city code that requires residents to replace large trees that are taken out, it's not always done, at least not with significantly sized trees, but more often with lollipop trees that decorate the front yard. Removing the Founder's Tree Designation could lead to more abuse of this city code. San Carlos is the only city on the peninsula, from Burlingame to almost San Jose, that is not part of the National Arbor Day Foundation's Tree City USA program. How did that happen? And where's the dedication to the oak tree in the town's logo? These 129-year-old trees, 30 of them Founder's Trees, have been neglected over the years, but not all of them are damaged beyond repair. Of course, safety is paramount, but can we find a balance to save the healthier trees and keep some of the city's heritage and our canopy intact? If any of these trees are cut down, the city should have a detailed landscape plan approved, and the funding for this project should be budgeted before any cutting starts. Thank you very much.
Next up is Mr. Haxton.
My family and I moved to San Carlos largely because of the city's trees. I run up San Carlos Avenue about once a week, my favorite running route through San Carlos, and I love the scenery and shade provided by the trees. I'm sure that many generations of San Carlos residents will run, bike, or drive along San Carlos Avenue over the next 130 years, and I want to make sure that we make an informed, thoughtful decision before removing any more of these mature trees. In my two minutes, I want to make three points. First, the average tree isn't dangerous. Second, the average eucalyptus tree isn't any more dangerous than any other tree. Finally, the city should commit to assessing the risk of individual trees in an unbiased and scientific manner. The average tree is very safe. On average, falling trees cause 34 deaths per year in the United States. That's fewer than the number of deaths from lightning, and 1,000 times less than the number from car accidents. The average eucalyptus tree is no more dangerous than the average tree. In temper climates like ours, they typically live 400 to 500 years. There have been six tragic deaths from falling trees in Northern California in the last 14 years, but none of them have been from eucalyptus trees. Three were from oak trees, one each from an elm, a redwood, and a Monterey pine. If the city has heard arguments suggesting that eucalyptus trees are more dangerous than other trees, as a scientist, I would be happy to help review the research. I searched the last 100 mentions of eucalyptus in the San Carlos EPackets, and I did not find any mention of such research. Individual trees of any species can become more likely than average to fall due to conditions like poor soil drainage or disease, so they need to be regularly inspected to prevent accidents, like the tree that fell in a car during a windstorm in 2006. The inconsistency of the three recent assessments of the city's Arborist, Kevin Keelty, have not inspired a lot of confidence. In 2005, he rated two of the trees as likely that the entire tree or large trunks of the tree would fail. In 2015, just two years ago, he put zero trees in this category. This year, he put 16 trees in that category. From the outside, it seems like the variation of these ratings has more to do with the city's new willingness to pay an Arborist $500,000 to remove the trees, and less to do with any deterioration in the last two years of these trees' 130-year lives. Mr. Keelty's ratings were based on inspecting the trees from the ground, a method that he stressed in 2015, is not to be taken as a complete hazard inspection. The city should develop procedures to reduce bias and increase accuracy in their inspections of trees. To remove conflict of interest, we can make inspectors ineligible for bidding for tree removal contracts. To increase accuracy, we could hire assessors who use modern technologies such as sonic tomography, which non-invasively measures the extent of decay inside trees. I ask that the city remove no more of these Founder's Trees, or does not remove their designation as Founder's Trees, until these assessment procedures have been put in place. Thank you.
Next up is Mr. Hoskin.
So I think everyone else has said things a little bit more eloquently than I have, but I have some sort of personal comments. So I'm Tom Hoskin, I live at 2108 Carmelita Drive. We've been there for 18 years, and I'm a neighbor of Lisa over here. We're looking forward to the block party this weekend. And one of the, so we're very happy Carmelita residents, and one of the reasons that we moved to San Carlos and Carmelita was for the trees, where our property backs onto the creek, and the trees provide a lot of work for me, but we get lots of great comments from people when they come over, how nice it is with the creek and the trees, and I can tell you on my running route where the loquat tree is up in the canyon, just about halfway on my run, and I can tell you where the plum trees are, and so on. But my sort of personal side of this, and I heard earlier a comment about the lens through which we're looking in this, and I don't necessarily agree with some of the personal comments here. I'm really talking not about specific trees, but about the Founder's Trees designation, which is really what this is supposed to be about. So years ago, we had a contractor come in and was thinning the trees, because we have so many for the health of the trees and so forth. So there was a lot of chaos going on, and it was, you know, do you cut this, you cut this, what about this, what about this, what about this? And in the middle of this, to make a long story short, the contractor removed one of these trees, and I never forgave him, or myself, for it, because it was on the creek, it provided erosion control, it was completely legal, but it provided erosion control, it provided coverage with the neighbors, it fit in with the other trees. And what I took away from that was that, you know, stick to the policy, stick to the plan, enforce the policy. If you have certain trees, use a permitting process, use the process that you have, that's what the Planning Commission is for, that's what the City Council is for. And I haven't really heard the reason why to change the whole designation like this. So don't go through this sort of, you know, rushed, expedited process just because of some particular trees in this one case. I hope that you try to look at the broader vision for trees for San Carlos. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Menton? Menton? Did I pronounce that correctly? Close enough for government work? Do me the favor of correctly pronouncing your name.
It's Menton.
Menton, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to express my comments, and if I'm a little hesitant, it's because I'm not used to these new classes. I am opposed to amending the San Carlos municipal code to take Founder's Trees out of the Heritage Tree Alliance. Not only does it single out particular trees that are helpful and useful in the history of San Carlos, but it also takes out a natural resource. San Carlos has an opportunity in revising or looking at their tree ordinance to put together some plans that would be beneficial and beautify the city. The route that these eucalyptus trees are on is one of the most heavily traveled thorough in San Carlos, and to have a, to make it more becoming and beautiful and add status to the city, I think it would be worthwhile to have a committee or group put together by the city, composed of city employees and residents, and also people who are interested in trees, and landscapers from the area, and come up with a plan where we can, where, that they could put together, keeping the... they could put together, keeping the eucalyptus trees that are still there and trimmed to be in good care, put in new trees of certain varieties, add new flowers and plants, shrubbery, and even add a path that you could walk along. I don't usually like to walk on San Carlos Avenue, because it's not something that's continuous in the sense of being safe. You either have to go out a little ways, or you have to go around something. So I think we could lead the way on the peninsula to show people what they could do with their trees that belong in their city and how they can make them more outstanding in their beauty and also more useful to the people that live near them. So I would like to propose that there be a committee put together to look into the segment of San Carlos Avenue from Sycamore to the Alameda to find out how we could beautify that particular stretch, and keeping the eucalyptus as well as adding more trees that would be lower perhaps in height and different in style, and, as I mentioned, flowers and flowering shrubs. Also, if this committee is put together, and then they recommend to you and/or to the City Council, there needs to be a budget in place before any trees are removed. And this way, we protect the ones we have, and we have the money to add the new ones to beautify what could become something that other cities along the peninsula might like to emulate. Thank you for my time.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. I've been a resident on San Carlos Avenue since 1972, and I live across the street from the tree that collapsed in January. The fortunate thing was it happened on a Wednesday, when the schoolchildren get out at 12:30 in the afternoon. But the tree fell at 2:30, maybe quarter to 3:00, I'm not sure exact time. That's when the children normally would be walking across that intersection with the flashing lights. That tree looked healthier than the ones further down on San Carlos Avenue, and nobody knows when any of them are going to fall. But if we would have lost the life of a youngster from that tree, I'm sure we would have more people here saying, "Take the trees down." I've heard some of the speakers say how nice they are and beautiful. I think they're the messiest trees in town. And having the tree across the street go down, I don't have to sweep my driveway of leaves and debris at this time. And I know the city has their workers out there after every storm to clean up the eucalyptus trees and the debris that falls from them. So I'm in favor of the amendment to remove Founder's Tree designation from the eucalyptus trees. Thank you.
And my last speaker slip is Mr. Viard. Oh, I'm sorry, Jackie Viard.
I wasn't coming prepared to speak, so I apologize if I need to come and sort through. So I've been a resident, along with my aunt, on San Carlos Avenue for 20 years, and I am in favor of taking the trees down but replacing them with something worthwhile. Eucalyptus trees are not native to California. They're an Australian tree. It'd be great to have something else there. I have no problem with that. But the residents did not have a vote that they were getting handed these trees and the, what do you call, the maintenance of them so many years ago. Plus, the house behind me sold, and the residents, also the real estate agents, do not disclose that they are responsible for those trees. So the house behind me has two of them that you're considering in the possibility of those 40 trees, and the new owners do not take care of it. They don't know that they're responsible for it, and it's a fire hazard. I've got 20 pictures that I can send to your site of the fire hazard. Somebody just pop a cigarette out the window, and my house will go up in flames, okay? Also, there's 20 to 50 turkey vultures living in those trees, that there's turkey-bird decrement on that street every day. You look, it's pure white. I've got it in the pictures, and the kids from Carlmont have to walk through that every day. I have to smell it, look at it every day. I've spent $5,000 just trimming the corner that hangs over my lot, because all the stuff falls into my pool, and that costs me a lot of money. Also, the trees have fallen not just on that car. It fell near the school. It's fallen on my neighbor's house twice, and the city wouldn't take ownership for the responsibility. So she has a damaged car, a damaged house, and this is going to keep happening. The one directly over my house could wipe our house out in a nutshell, and the house across San Carlos Avenue. They're over 100 feet tall, okay? So I've talked about the fire hazard, the bird decrement, and it spends thousands of dollars. It's a safety hazard. Limbs are falling every year, whether it be winter or summer, doesn't matter, you never know when they're going to fall. The house of the -- somebody mentioned the trees, beautiful trees in Burlingame and Palo Alto. They are maintained by the city. Called Burlingame, called the So城市. They maintain them. If you put the onus on us, us residents cannot afford to cut down those trees, multi-thousands of dollars to take one tree down. I've already called and gotten estimates on it. And like I said, real estate agents do not tell the new residents that they are responsible for that. So I think that's all I have, but I am all in for taking them down and replacing them with something that's great.
Thank you. So that is the end of the speaker slips. Was there someone here who wished to provide public comment that has not yet had an opportunity to provide public comment? Please come up, and if you're willing to identify yourself for the record and where you live, that would be lovely.
My name is Jacqueline Napp. I live at 773 Dartmouth Avenue, and I just, I didn't realize that we were supposed to feel out a slip.
That's okay.
I'm a low-income senior citizen. I'm not the only one in San Carlos, and it cost me $2,400 to prune those trees three years ago. I just had a 10- or 12-foot branch, I brought pictures, fall, no wind, nothing, in my backyard. I have four eucalyptus trees. I think they're around 80 feet tall. I've had someone light-wind on fire walking on San Carlos Avenue a few years back. There are police reports and everything, and those can explode. Luckily, a neighbor, my husband, ran out and put the hoses on them. I took one down that was between my house and my neighbor's 17 years ago. It was $10,000 then, very, very expensive to take down, but I had no problem getting the city, even though they're heritage trees or whatever they're called. They had no problem giving me a permit. They said they're thrilled. But the problem is, as the lady before me said, not everybody has the money. I would love to take those four down. I don't have the money, and I'm on low income. And big branches. I've already had a homeowner's claim. Just a small branch fell on a car, nothing noticeable, but it put enough of a dent that it was $6,000 on my homeowner's claim. So I can see a lot of problems with the trees, and I do think they're more dangerous. I do think the limbs fall more easily. I'm not confident in Keelty, because they said I had three trees, and I had to provide a picture, there are four. So they said they looked at them from the ground up, but they wouldn't tell us when they were coming or come into our yard. So I know they didn't look very closely, because they couldn't even count my trees correctly. And so they're now coming back out supposedly to look, but they're not telling me when or what. So I want my own, I would like to get Davy Tree to say they're unsafe or something and have that input, but I can't afford to take them down, is the problem.
And I'm sorry, what was your address again?
773 Dartmouth.
Thanks.
Thank you for letting me speak, and I'm sorry I didn't feel out a slip.
So I didn't actually think there were any of these trees near my house, but she's my immediate neighbor. So do I, I mean, this is a general ordinance. I don't have to recuse myself if I'm within 500 feet of one of these trees, do I? I don't want to. I mean, I'm sure I can be unbiased, but I honestly, until this moment, I didn't realize I was that close to one of these eucalyptus trees.
Yeah, I just looked at the map as you commented, and it looks like there's three of the trees are at the very edge of --
There are four.
Oh, they, correction, there's four.
Sorry, I shouldn't laugh.
According to the map, there's three, but there's apparently four. And the, just that, I don't, I mean, I don't know what the distance is from your home, because they're identified as being on the other side of Club Drive from, I think, where your residence is. And I don't, it is, it is a, it's an ordinance that, just going through the analysis --
San Carlos Avenue.
I'd probably like to take a break if you, just so I can think about it a little.
Yeah, you want, because I don't want to, I don't want to screw this up, but I honestly, I'm sorry, I should have spotted the issue, but I, you know, I walk by those trees all the time. Now that, I mean, I remember when your fence was, I remember when your fence came down, and I should have noticed the trees then, but like, I've never really noticed them. They're on the other side of the fence, and so I walk by them probably every day. I walk by your house every day, and I didn't even notice.
I'd recommend we just take a recess, and then we can do some measuring to see the distance, and then I'll figure out, I'll do some analysis of the, whether you need to recuse just because of the distance.
2814 San Carlos Avenue. I'm the last house in San Carlos. The Welcome to Belmont sign is on my property. What?
Oh, I was going to say, you want to adjourn us for recess?
Oh, yeah. We're going to take a five-minute break, if that's all right. You're obviously welcome to stay. We're not kicking anybody out.
[music]
And in abundance of caution, I'm going to recuse myself. It was very nice to see all of you this evening. And good luck.
So.
Sorry.
Guess that's, that's that.
Call a meeting back to order and so he has to recuse himself. We'll move ahead. Do we have any more?
Are we at discussion?
We're closed for comments, right? So.
Do we need to close?
We close the public hearing, right?
Yes.
So we're at comment?
We have roll call for closing.
I move that we close public, uh, public comment.
Oh, yeah, I second it. I thought we did.
Okay, I wasn't sure, but I don't, I actually don't think we did, did we?
Okay, I second.
Okay. So we don't need to vote?
Oh, we do, yeah.
We need to vote.
Commissioner Bergman?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper Pedersen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
So room for comment? I, I have some strong feelings about this one, so I'm gonna go ahead and go and then you guys can fight it out. But, um, so I, unless you guys can move me off it, and I don't think you can on this one. I will vote to not remove the designation, and here's why. I think that the trees actually shape or part of the shape and character of the, of the community, for one. Two, I think that there is enough to say that it is still tied to a founder. I think that that designation, I think it still fits into that requirement that the trees are attached to someone who's a founding person of our community, and I think the trees still are, that hasn't changed. I also questioned the Arborist report, having seen the scientist over there that was speaking about saying how they changed from year to year and how it was a drastic shift. I, I wonder about, you know, people that have an interest in doing something and their reporting. So I question that, and I, so I, I will vote to maintain the designation.
I have, I have a couple of questions, actually, before I move on to comments, if that's okay, Dawn.
Yes.
Um, I was wondering if staff could comment on one of the assertions made in public comment that Belmont and Burlingame have been able to safely preserve their historical eucalyptus? And I'm curious how they've been able to do that, why they chose to do that, and if the city is paying to maintain those trees. Sorry, that's a lot of questions.
Well, I did communicate with Burlingame regarding their tree program. So the, the trees were planted around the same time, the 1800s, entrances to the estates in Burlingame Hills. They, the city maintains the trees, okay? He indicated that they had three tree failures this past winter. They determined 12 trees needed to be removed immediately after evaluation. And then the remaining trees are gonna be evaluated, but he's estimating he's gonna have to remove another five to eight trees due to the heavy rains that were occurring. He's had most of the large eucalyptus trees reduced from the 100 to 120 feet height to around 80 feet over the years, so he's topped them. They now prune them every three years to remove suckers and potential hazardous limbs. Last year, they spent $33,000 to trim 28 eucalyptus. This year, they're estimating to spend $70,000 for 58 eucalyptus. They need to use a crane, large limbs, climbers. So that's about the information I got on that. I did not contact Belmont.
There was one other, there's one other element of the trees in Burlingame, just 'cause I'm familiar with that, is that the trees on El Camino Real are the state, maintained by the state. So Burlingame doesn't have responsible for the El Camino trees. The state's maintaining them.
That is, that is a difference. Is the Arborists that compiled the report here?
Hi, can you come on up? I have a question for you, and I imagine you guys may also have a question. Probably the most immediate question that comes to mind is, can you speak? One of the people in public comment made the assertion that eucalyptus are no less safe than other trees. Can you speak to that assertion? Is that a fair statement? And do these eucalyptus on San Carlos have some differentiating factor that makes them less safe?
Yeah, right. Yes, I can address that. Eucalyptus are more dangerous than, every tree is different. Every species of tree is different. The eucalyptus tend to be more dangerous due to their rapid growth and their very heavy weight. The trunks of those large ones will weigh about 1,000 pounds a foot. So you think about as you go up, you're getting quite a bit of weight. The, um, the, the ones in Burlingame that failed, 'cause I was out there the day they failed, they had a receded root zone. They had restricted root area, much like these trees do. And they had very little or almost no roots when they came out of the ground. And they weren't the worst trees on the row, 'cause the reports had been done and that the city arborists and myself had walked that road many times. And the trees we were worried about did not fall. But the ones that were, that we thought were the best ones were the ones that fell. They also cut three other ones down because, before they fell, 'cause the ground was cracking up, you know, so.
How do you determine the root area and why do these eucalyptus have such restricted root area?
Sidewalks, streets, much like what we have here, you know, on San Carlos Avenue. They, um, they generally don't develop well in the, in the asphalt, beneath the asphalt roadbed. On El Camino, um, when they, when San Francisco Water replaced the pipeline, they used bit large launch pits that they, they shoved the pipe through. We found no roots in the street on El Camino, which was pretty alarming, 'cause the trees are only two, three feet away from, from El Camino. So, um, it's, the abuse that they take and the, and eucalyptus, if you're gonna keep a large eucalyptus, you really have to manage it. And these trees have not been managed. I did the report 11 years ago when the, the large tree fell on the car on Cordilleras. And Maine Tree Experts did the last report, two, three years ago, something like that. And then I've done this one again. And, um, some, some of the reasoning, the conditions have changed, and my opinion has changed, is due to the, the large number of mature eucalyptus that we've seen fail recently, so.
Um, in your opinion, is there any particular new reason why these eucalyptus have failed so much more in the last 10 years?
Um, one thing about eucalyptus, they've only been in the country 150 years. So we don't know exactly what happens to these trees as they mature. So we're finding out that very mature eucalyptus is, you can see the dieback in the tops, large dead pieces. And I think part of that is, is as they mature, they're not gonna live 350 years on, on San Carlos Avenue. I think as they mature, their root crown recedes, you know, the root zone. And that seems to be the, the best opinion that I have. And then the large heavyweight and the large load, you get a storm, water, soil saturation, they're likely to fall. We've seen eucalyptus falling for, I've done this for 40 years, and so we've seen them falling regularly on heavy storm occasions for the past 40 years.
So, um, a question that is, might be more towards the future, but I think has some bearing on our discussion is, and certainly some of the things brought up in public comment, is what, what would you plant instead? That's, yes, native. I, by the way, do agree that it needs to be at least a 24-inch box tree. If you're gonna reduce that much shade, you need to have really big trees on the onset go in. What would you recommend that would give a similar character as far as shading and ambiance, but maybe not fall over on kids?
That part of San Carlos Avenue tends to become quite rural looking compared to the downtown area.
Right, it really does.
So I think valley oak, coast live oak would be the best bet, especially where you have that riparian, where the creek runs through. You know, all the oak trees in that creek are growing towards the people's properties, 'cause they're growing out from under the eucalyptus. And the eucalyptus are retarding their growth. So I think, you know, improve that riparian area, get oaks along the edge of that bank, which is what should grow there. And I think it would, I think that's the best bet.
And the oak, the oak's root system would perform better underneath the asphalt?
Nothing's really gonna do good under the sidewalk and the asphalt. But the, the oak is, it's a slower-growing tree. You do get failures from the oak, but if they're maintained from a young age, they'll be a much better tree than. Burlingame's replacing with eucalyptus, and we've had mixed reviews with that. It's a different type of eucalyptus, a smaller eucalyptus. But, yeah.
Thank you very much. Do you guys have questions for the Arborists?
Any more?
I might add that I, I'm an independent consultant. I have no interest in removing 44 eucalyptus trees, so.
We understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I can.
Any more questions of staff?
Let me see, um.
I'd just like to make a comment on the safety. If there wasn't a mechanism for removing safe trees already in place, I would vote for this in a heartbeat. But there's a mechanism already in place for removing unsafe trees. And as long as that mechanism is in place, I don't see why we need to remove the designation. That's, 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 that's my last bit.
I think, um, my only, my only real question for staff, and this can be one that, that plays out a little longer, is, is more of a timeline issue. When I read the report, it looked like these eucalyptus would be removed within three months, if, if the city council even takes those, those sorts of actions. And I guess I was, I am wondering if, if that's the plan in place, or will there be some other evaluation happening before decisions about how to proceed go about? I mean, I think the neighbors bring up an important part of the character of San Carlos Avenue. It does look more rural than, than other parts of the city. And I think maintaining that naturalistic character is important to people who live on the street and near the street and walk through the street. And I'm wondering if we have a plan in place to keep the character. I don't know, Jay or Lisa, I don't know if that would be a, it's, I know it's a big tent kind of question, but I appreciate your response.
Good evening, Jay Walter, Public Works Director. And part of answer to your question, as it relates to what would happen if and when the council was to, were to approve this ordinance change? We would prepare plans and specifications that we would put out to bid. We would have contractors bid on the work. The work, as we discovered this last summer to remove the four, was very complex. The traffic plan that was needed and the detouring and the routing, plus the room for the crane to set up and do all the work. We would have to work very carefully with the contractor to come up with good traffic plans. And then schedule removals during times, for example, when school's not in session. We may do quite a bit of the work next summer, simply for that reason. But we'd also have to make sure that we were able to properly take and remove groups of trees, but yet still be able to handle the traffic that uses that street. So that's kind of the answer for the, that one part of your question. As it relates to replacement trees, as we go along the, the path, the project council has given us the, the money to move forward with a, a study for pedestrian improvements along San Carlos Avenue. We had our first discussion with the council at the last meeting about that project. They seem very favorable with what we had in terms of some of the intersection improvements and at least some of the sidewalk improvements. We would use that project to be where we would do the replacement planting. So council has indicated that in our discussions before, that if these trees are removed, they wanna have trees planted in their place. We have not decided what types, we have not decided how big, but your point of the 24-inch box going in to provide some level of, of, you know, aesthetic and canopy right away is a good one. But we just haven't figured that out yet. And, and that's largely because the council hasn't given final approval to that plan. But I think we have two vehicles by which we can ensure that replacement planning.
Thank you, Jay. Appreciate it. Um, okay. Those are my questions. I have some comments, if, if you want those now, Dawn, or if I don't wanna, if you guys have questions. So just a couple of comments. I do think that, like I said, the, the character of San Carlos Avenue is important. That's why the canopy of a tree would be important. I understand that there's a relation of these eucalyptus trees to a historical citizen of, of San Carlos. And I don't, I don't take those two things lightly, but I will say this. Just because something happened 29, 129 years ago doesn't mean it should have happened in the first place. I don't know that that's a good enough reason to not correct something that may have been a mistake 129 years ago. Should these trees that are not native to, to this area have been planted, have ever been planted there? And would we do it if we were, knowing what we know now, would we plant those trees? And if the answer is no, is that the only thing handcuffing us to keeping these trees is because of, you know? I mean, I'm sure Timothy Guy Phelps didn't know what we know now about tree planting, about eucalyptus, about how San Carlos would develop and grow in general. I am very, very, very sensitive to the changing visual things happening in San Carlos. And I also really do believe in historical preservation. It is so important, and it means a lot to members of the community, including, including members of the community who've lived here a long time, and members who move into the community wanting that kind of quaint city to live in. But I think in this case, the, the safety issues, combined with the fact that this is not a native tree, outweigh the fact that it was planted by a historical citizen 129 years ago. I think it was a mistake. They shouldn't have been planted, and we have the opportunity to rectify these mistakes in a very meaningful, measured way. And I think we should do that. Or we should recommend to the council to do that. So, but those are my comments.
Thank you for your comments. Anything else?
I'm done.
I agree with much of what you've just said and asked. It's a difficult decision for us to make, but we need to move ahead. I'll entertain a motion.
Okay. And I do need to make both motions. Okay. I move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending that the city council approve the mitigated negative declaration. Do I have to do these separately, Lisa? Okay.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Harper, Harper Pedersen?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergman?
No.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
I move that the San Carlos, excuse me, I move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending that the city council adopt an ordinance to amend the San Carlos zoning ordinance, Title 18 of the San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 18 dot 41 dot 020, removing reference to founders' trees and protected status of eucalyptus trees.
I'll second.
Commissioner Bergman?
No.
Commissioner Harper Pedersen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
I made a real mess of this paperwork this time.
That concludes our cases. Do we have a report from the staff?
Um, yes, I have a, um, some information, I guess, information to report on recent city council actions. And that, one of them being, and I know this is often discussed here at the Planning Commission level, and that has to do with parking. So on August 28th, the city council adopted the 2017 Parking Study and directed staff to move forward with four priority parking management initiatives. Those four include updating the parking in Lufi, reconfiguring existing public parking plazas, and expanding, considering expanding our existing transportation demand management program. And look at expanding parking technologies, such as the street line parking technology that we currently have downtown. So that's a city council action item that I wanted to update the commission with. And I believe that Parking Study is available online. And if the Planning Commission would like a copy of that, please just email. If any of you would like a copy, just email me, and I'll make sure to get you a copy of that Parking Study.
Anything else? Any comments? Then time for adjournment.
I don't, I don't have any comments, but I am, I am curious, just for planning staff comments, reports, and updates on current projects, if you have any new updates about what we might expect for the next two meetings?
Um, yes, so on the next meeting, on September 18th, the item that was originally scheduled to be reviewed this evening will, is looking to come back on the 18th. I will probably have more information by the end of this week in terms of other items, and I can provide you with additional update. For the October 2nd Planning Commission hearing, a proposal to amend the zoning ordinance for consideration of cannabis-oriented businesses will be presented as a public hearing item. And again, this is a follow-up to the study session that the Planning Commission recently had on cannabis. So that's information that I have for the next two meetings. In other reports and updates that the Planning Division can provide you with is kind of a fun, exciting project. I don't know if you have been, are privy to this, I know Dawn has been. But the Economic Development Division within the Community Development Department has been working on a citywide wayfinding program. So if any of the commissioners or the public have seen some of the mock signage that's located in and around the downtown, those are purposely put up just to kind of show you the possibilities for what that signage might look like. So I wanted to provide the commission with a handout, and it includes a map of where all of those signs are located, and a little bit of, of a description about which signage types those are. So you have some that are oriented towards motorists, some for bicyclists, some for pedestrians, et cetera. So I'll just go ahead and pass these out, so in case if you haven't seen those and would like to know where those are located, you can take a look. And then lastly, as the Planning Commission already knows, but I wanted to make an announcement publicly. On August 24th, one of our RDRC members unfortunately had to resign from the committee due to, you know, personal, you know, challenges with work-life, home-like. You know, I think he had taken on a couple extra jobs or, because of his working situation, would no longer be able to be as available on the committee as he would like to be. And that, of course, is Joaquin Pedrin. So I just wanted to make an announcement publicly. He's been a valuable asset to the RDRC, and I know we will miss him. We are currently have an active call for applications, and that call for applications closes on September the 22nd. City staff, including myself and Alcovee and the city manager, often meet with the RDRC applicants to answer any questions, let them know about the roles and responsibilities, and what generally goes on at the RDRC meetings. Interviews are already scheduled for October 4th, so if all goes according to our plan, we could have a new RDRC member on October 16th. In case anyone was interested or curious about how many meetings we may have to have with two members only. So it looks like we can probably get by with just three meetings with two members only. So we will let you know as soon as we get a replacement. And I don't have anything else, unless Al does. Looks like we don't. So thank you.
Meeting's adjourned.